All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. My name's Paul Strobel. I am taking over for Sean today temporarily. He is not able to make it. Our mayor is out, but we'll get things rolling here. Appreciate seeing everyone here. Looking forward to hearing from you all as well, too. We're gonna start, though, with the pledge of allegiance. You join me?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the high state of Florida, to the republic, to the nation, to God.
Thank you. Could I have the roll call?
Councillor Dunsborough. Councillor Hughes.
Here.
Councillor Litke.
Here.
Councillor Strobel.
Here.
Councillor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkone.
All right, thank you. Uh, we're gonna get things started. We've got a time for citizen and community comments.
Before we jump into that, can I add something to the agenda to discuss the Campanella Parks? And based upon the comments that are coming in today and some of the stuff that was discovered over the weekend, I know it's a hot button item. I'd like to add that to the agenda for council business today, if you could.
All right, we'll add something in there.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got, we've got thirty minutes at the beginning of the meeting and then thirty minutes at the, at the end of the meeting as time for input. We've got forms here for those that are in person. I understand we've got some people online as well, too. So we're gonna start with the folks in person here. Everyone's allotted three minutes. They've got a timer system here as well, too, so we wanna get as many in as possible. So the first person I've got here is Mr. Birch. If you are ready, step up. Yep.
There you go.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tim Birch. I'm resident of the Campanella Estates neighborhood. I'm also an elected member of our Transition Advisory Board that's gonna be taking over for our HOA Homeowners Association. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about the proposed infrastructure improvements to the Campanella Memorial Park. While I don't think you're gonna find a lot of resistance to park improvements in general within the city, I do believe that there's a lot of people within our community that have a lot of concerns with the improvements at the Campanella Park as proposed. Um, I sent each one of your offices some correspondence a couple of days ago with the more specific items as to some of our concerns, but just like to go over a couple of those briefly. First and foremost is safety. Excuse me. With the addition of so many proposed improvements, safety within the community becomes a big concern. Uh, we know from meeting with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office in our community that resources are limited, especially for seemingly minor property crimes. And adding additional park improvements into that neighborhood will also increase our profile as a residential community and neighborhood, which has the potential to increase crime within our own neighborhood. Um, we would welcome the council providing any additional resources in terms of law enforcement within the city as a whole. Um, two, traffic. This was mentioned in your, uh, last, uh, uh, pre-meeting before the council meeting. Um, if you need a perfect example of traffic concerns with this part proposal, um, I invite you to go to Sandy and look at Bornstedt Park, um, which also contains a splash pad up there. Additionally, you don't need to look any further than Broadway Street here during the baseball games, as it was mentioned. The traffic is really a big safety concern, especially for my kids who play at the park and many of our residents who also have kids within the neighborhood. Um, this issue also seems to have the potential to just get more complex with the extension of Hillway um, up the cemetery road. And, uh, we'd advise you to look into that, uh, further prior to moving forward with it. Um, finally, the last few seconds I have, I am supportive of the park improvements generally, but I believe some of the proposals, like specifically the splash pad, would be better served in a park such as Wade Creek. Um, Wade Creek has more focus on the city as a whole. And, uh, as opposed to being contained within a specific neighborhood. And I know if I didn't live within Campanella, um, it would almost give the perception that, uh, our community was singled out for these park improvements. And, uh, I think having a lot of those improvements, especially the splash pad, would be better served at Wade Creek where everybody within the city could enjoy those. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Next, I've got Doug Taylor.
Well, thank you for your time. Um, I live in Campanella Estates as well. And the population there actually makes up about twenty percent of the city of Estacada. If you figure that there's two hundred and eighty-eight homes times three and a half people, that's one thousand and five people, which is twenty percent of the five thousand people in here. And we, um, have been quite organized in our meetings. We have Facebook pages. We had Joel come out. We really appreciate you coming out on a Sunday night. Um, pride prevention committees, and we're highly organized, and we wanna do what's best for the city and the committee. But in talking with through all these groups, the three main priorities that we have are security, safety, and prior, and, um, priority, privacy. And if you look at one of your main roles as a city of council, it's to be risk managers. And one of the things that is important to me is the part of safety, but specifically traffic, safety, and controls. And some of the suggestions that I have for the committee is number one, Hillway and Broadway, there's so much traffic. I mean, on Hillway every day, you see the dump trucks and all the construction stuff that is just flying up our street. I happen to live on Hillway. And as he mentioned so eloquently, there's kids at that ballpark, and it's so crammed. If they step out in between cars, they're gonna get hit and killed. It's just awful there. So we need speed bumps coming in on Broadway and on Hillway. The second thing we need is there is no posted speed limits whatsoever. And if you had coming near off Broadway and on Hillway, twenty mile an hour speed limits posted, and then take it one step further and have the flashing speed that you see all the time of for cars that are coming up, that if they're going thirty-five miles an hour and it's twenty, hopefully they have the common sense to slow down. Um, though, my last point was just the baseball field, but piggybacking off one of the things that Tim said is we really do need police that go through that area. And if you look at us having twenty percent of the people in Estacada, but if you look at the property values and the property taxes that are assessed on it, I would argue that we have thirty, thirty-five percent of the property taxes that are coming in. And I think it's very worthwhile that we have full-time police officers that can go to this area as opposed to Clackamas County that may be forty-five minutes away. And if, if there is an issue that they're not able to get there in time. Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you, Doug. I've got Julie Peterson next.
Um, I agree with everything that has been said so far, and so I'm just gonna focus on the splash pad. You go to these areas, and if you go look at these other splash pads in Sandy and the other areas, you'll see that the kids' ratio is huge and the parent ratio is none. And when you look at a splash pad in a residential area, parents think, oh, I can drop my kid off, come back four hours later and pick him up because it's a residential area and it's safe. That then makes the community the babysitters, and that's not fair for us. And there's no way to monitor that. I get that. But putting a splash pad in a residential area, you're creating issues. You're creating kids running around with no parents watching them, causing issues, getting in the bathrooms, doing damage, doing drugs, you know, coming into our backyards, doing things in our backyards that we're not wanting this to happen. So please consider the fact that this is gonna be a babysitting place for these kids, and you can't leave kids alone. It's just not proper.
Thank you, Julie. I've got Darren now.
Well, I'm Darren. Uh, I live at sixteen seventy-three Northeast Forest, Forest Park Street. So, look, a lot of my beef is with polished homes and, and not so much you guys, but there, there is a lot of things that bring up a lot of concerns. I paid extra money for the green space that I was gonna have behind my home that I'm no longer gonna have. And I was told that I paid twenty thousand dollars extra. You know, um, i- if, I'm just gonna say, if you've ever went over to the baseball fields on the weekends, it's one lane, and like everybody said, there's no emergency equipment gonna go through there if there was an emergency. And, and look, safety needs to be our number one priority, right? So, i- anyway, I, I just really think that there needs to be some considerations on, you know, I think my wife touched on a lot of things. We obviously have a lot of the same values. I don't wanna be the babysitter that's got the splash pad in my backyard because I will be that babysitter, and I just don't wanna be that person. But, you know, um, I, I think, I think if it was more well thought out, I think Wade Park makes the most sense for this place. It's not right in a residential area. And it's already kind of set up to, to have that kind of setup. So be it, you know, pavilions there, people can have picnics, you can bring your families in. You, you can have all them things and, and, and just not be, you know, in our backyard, you know? Another thing that I heard that kinda raised some awareness to me was the surveillance cameras. Am I gonna be a, be able to be in my backyard? Or am I gonna be under, I mean, am I gonna be able to be private with my wife in my own backyard? I'm just saying, you know, and I don't know what that is. It doesn't happen all that often, but I guess what I'm saying is I, I like my privacy. So, you know?
All right, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Who, who, who wants to follow him now?
I don't think I've ever seen that shade of red before.
All right, I've got Pat up next. Great.
Hi, I'm on Forest Park also. I'm over in the garden. But I need to have them there spinning yelling when I have a dog that's gonna be barking constant. Having things to possible. We have children walking back and forth constantly going to school and playing in the park. You guys have already had homeless living here with garbage and waste. You put a city park in our area. Who's gonna protect our children all the time going to school and coming back with whoever comes into our area and we don't know about? It's not gonna be us that are gonna be responsible. It's gonna be the city's gonna be responsible. Also with the dog park, if you haven't been to the Hundred Mile Acre Dark Park in Troutdale and smelled what it smells like in the summer, and you're putting it right there by our walkway right now, that who don't clean up the poop, who doesn't all pee, anything that's been there, drug, everything, you're putting us all at risk one way or another. If it's not us, it's our animals. So really, like everybody says, there's other parks. We are a neighborhood. We shouldn't have to put something in our neighborhood where we feel comfortable with each other. Our dogs are comfortable with each other. We just don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I've got Mikel.
Hi, I wanna kind of write up back on, thinking back on hers. The dog park's supposed to go in front of ours also. Um, our house, but you guys don't, um, empty the garbages already. You know, who's gonna, um, empty them? Who's gonna make sure that the smell's not there? Um, also, what happens if the dogs do get out? You are in a residential area. Are you monitoring what type of dogs are there? Kids are playing. Are they gonna get out, you know, attack a little kid in that area? So, that's all I got.
All right, thanks for telling us. And is it Athene? Athena?
Right. Hi, I'm Athena. I actually live on one six two eight Southwest Broadway, and, um, we're one straight up from where that is. And one of the things that I think I need to point out is, for one, none of us were told about it. And if I would have known that, I mean, I wouldn't have bought there. I mean, I don't wanna be around a lot of kids, a lot of, I mean, the neighborhood right now is really quiet. Um, it's nice. It's, you know, safe. And just to have that influx of kids, not with parents, because you know that's gonna happen. Um, you have the influx of drugs and cars and, you know, teenagers that just don't act appropriately. Um, because, I'm sorry, they just don't. But, um, and, you know, that puts, you know, our kids, our grandkids at, at risk. Um, I wouldn't want it there. Um, and that's something that, you know, when I first found out about it, I was it, I was shocked at first because one of the things that I was told was it was the property that was in between cemetery and the last row of houses that were built. That's where I was told that something was gonna be going in, like, you know, other green space, stuff like that. So, I mean, that whole area to have the amount of items and things like that that you wanna put in there, it's not gonna happen. I mean, it, it's too much, and you really need to size down. And I completely agree. I mean, the splash pad, Wade Park needs to go to Wade Park, you know, make use of those items that are over there already. Um, you have like a volleyball area that is not really used. Put it, change it into something else. You know, make it something that, you know, can be used. Um, and that's it.
Thanks, Christine. How we doing on time here? We're doing pretty good, right?
We're doing pretty good. Yes, everybody's doing great. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that, folks. And I know it's, it's not easy getting up and talking in front of everybody, too. So I appreciate you taking the ta, the chat, uh, the time to do that and, and, uh, and actually doing it, too. I've got Tracy. You're our last in-person one here. And then do we have any hands raised? We've got some raised.
There's two hands raised.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Tracy Udi, and I also live in Campanella. Um, I sent an email out to all of you as well, um, but just to kind of touch on a couple of things that are really important to me. Um, first, I guess the splash pad. Of course, we're gonna beat that down, you know, beat that dead horse, but we've got the splash pads going in. Going back on meeting minutes, I went back to twenty sixteen where I did see a lot of conversation about it going to Wade Creek, then it wasn't going to Wade Creek. Well, then I see there's plumbing already at Wade Creek for it. Then there's some argument about there's not a place to put it now, but I will agree with Athena who said that the volleyball court, I have never seen that utilized one time at that park, and I've been there a lot with my kids. So I guess my question is on that, like, what the cost that we're gonna be putting into building this splash pad? If it is something that's gonna go through, can we utilize the Wade Creek, Creek Park and some of the stuff that you already have? We already got the water set up there. Why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we save the money? Um, curious, uh, funding on that. Is that all going to be like grants that we're building that, uh, with? Or is part of city money coming? Is it gonna be some city funding? If so, you know, I'd really be interested on the overall cost of what that is. Um, because I, I see that if we are spending money from the city, why aren't we putting it in police enforcement, adding additional park rangers? Um, I feel like there's better use for the money for such a seasonal, uh, seasonal, uh, amenity. So, and then, yeah, as far as the, um, park ranger goes, I really think that with building an eight acre park, that we really need to look at having a full-time park ranger that's gonna be able to get out there. It's gonna check. I know that's not their job to empty the garbages, but keep things safe, keep it clean, report stuff as needed. Um, signage? So, get a situation recently where we had a Honda Accord parked right behind my house. Right, we're back up to the little, um, parking lot. I watched the guy get out. I watched the guy change his clothes in the parking lot. I called the police. The police are not quick to respond. The guy has, he leaves. I hear him go down to River Mill, I think it is, turns the car off. Uh, okay, cop shows up. I said, he went this way. I just heard his car turn off, turn back on. Cop went down there, didn't end up catching up with him. I hear six o'clock in the morning, that piece of crap coming back through the neighborhood, pulls into the lot, turns off his car, grabs his backpack, takes off trucking through the neighborhood. He goes back through the bushes. I get in my car. I follow him. I call the cops. I say, here's where he's at. He's in the bushes. We wanna go after him. So cop was cool. He did. He was about a thirty-minute response time, I wanna say. Went back there, kind of checked things out, couldn't find him. Car remained there. Guy comes back. I think it was a day later. Empties his car into another car. Okay, his car is at this point backed in. Am I okay?
You can, yeah, you can finish your thought there.
So he is backed in. So he unloads his car, then he turns it and pulls it in forward. Why do you think he does that? Because it's an automatic, and he thinks someone can't tow it, right? Then he proceeds to leave the car, takes off for another couple of days. I'm calling it in. I know other people in the neighborhood have called it in. Nothing happened to it. Finally, I get a text from one of the officers at one fifteen in the morning. He said, I just wanna let you know I handled it. One fifteen in the morning. I said, thank you so much. Like, we do not need that riffraff in our neighborhood. We just don't need it. Like, we, I, I just can't stress enough that there is, it's, we're a community. We're not, you know, it's an eight acre park. We've got a little park there. And while that's little park's great, you know, but to, to make a park that large and that size of a community is, uh, really gonna cause a lot of problems on so many, so many levels.
All right, thanks, Tracy.
Can I add one more thing? It's one, I'm really bad at this. Just one more.
We've got, we've got, uh, someone from Parks and Rec to speak here as well, too, if Brent doesn't mind, plus some more online to chime in. If, if it's, if it, if you can hit it quick.
Yes, signage. Okay, so moving into Campanella. Was not told. I was one of the first houses that was built on the green space. Was not told about it. Okay, fine, understand that. However, does the city have, or should they be putting some kind of signage in, like, hey, future park, eight acres? Because I can tell you, if I saw that signage, future park, eight acres, I would not have bought on that green space. So I don't know if that's something to let people know because, uh, I feel like it's not being transparent. It's not, there's no transparency there about what's going on, and you're surely not getting it from the Polish side at all. In fact, they're telling you quite the opposite.
And just to be clear, Polish is the developer.
Correct.
Right, okay.
That's a whole nother two. And, and it's selfish, but having some kind of signage would be really nice for the new people moving into the, they can make an educated, you know, decision.
Yep, thanks, Tracy. I appreciate it. We still have about ten minutes.
So we have Kimberly Abels on and Brandy Litke, who both have their hands raised.
Kimberly, go ahead.
She's gonna bring.
Okay.
Okay, now Kimberly can talk.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Hi, I'm actually here on a totally different topic. Um, more, I've sent a few of you a couple of different emails. Um, sorry, Kimberly Abels, I live on Deuce Road. Um, I was actually calling or wanted to chat about the safety committee. And I do have one concern that I hope you can help carry forward, and it seems as though, I do wanna thank Sadie and Melanie for all their help, but it seems like an arbitrary decision was made to limit this committee to only city residents. But it looks like this program is going to discuss safe routes to school, traffic impacts, school safety, and neighborhood watch programs that pop up around the city. So I feel as though future iterations should be considerate of at least one or two seats available for those who live within the school district, regardless of whether or not they live within the city. Um, and especially given recent national events, I think school safety is gonna be at the top of mind for all of us. And as we send our children to school in Estacada, and we're talking about safety and what that looks like, both traffic-wise and just moving forward, um, it's going to impact those of us, not just within city proper, but also within the school district. So I'm just, um, I would just like to ask that in future iterations, or when you form this committee, the next time around, you consider some seats to be available for those in the school district, not just within city limits. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all you do.
Great. Thank you, Kimberly. And then who else did we have on there? Brandy.
Brandy.
All right.
Okay, Brandy. Hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, Brandy. Um, I'm, you guys know me. I'm on Clackamas Way. Um, normally I'd be there in person. I apologize. I am not. I just wanted, I'm obviously here for a different reason. I just wanted to remind everybody that we have two major events coming up this weekend. We have our first responders appreciation dinner on Saturday, the second, um, from five PM to seven PM up at Hillockburn Farm. And if you or somebody you know wants to come to that dinner, you need to RSVP. So please, please remember to do that. And then also, we have Estacada Farm Festival happening, um, Sunday, July third, up at the same location. Um, we'll have vendors and carnival games and all kinds of fun stuff for the community to get together and kind of support one another, support some small craft, crafters and makers and, and just have some fun together. And I just wanted to remind the community about that. And, um, thank you, guys. That's it.
All right, thanks, Brandy. Do we have anyone else online?
No, no one else has raised their hand. If anybody else wanted to speak, they needed to raise their hand online.
Well, again, I appreciate all that have come out and, and, uh, especially the timing of it. We're in the stages of, of looking at ideas for the park right now. So appreciate that you're coming out now and not after we've allocated all the funds towards it and everything like that. Uh, that make it a lot more difficult of conversation, but we've got Brent Doddrell here as well, too, if you don't mind. If you could chime in in here. He is the person leading up the Parks and Rec Commission as well, too.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. And I, yeah, I wanna thank all of you for coming out. Many of you spoke to the Parks and Rec Committee. So I wanna assure the council, as you as well, that we've heard you and remind the council of the process that you're aware of. So we are an advisory committee to you. So this next Wednesday, we will be taking all of that input we've received and talk about it. And I think much of what has been said to us and to you is very valid. I think there's too much in the park. So obviously, the challenge to you, especially as elected officials, as you've heard people tell you or your predecessors, that you, they want a splash pad. You've put into Wade Creek Park what you've heard people tell you. I've heard tonight that we need to take out the volleyball course. And so when you do that, you will have people that have elected you tell you that they really like that, and why did you take that out? So that's the challenge for you. So again, we will be recommending to you a much revised version of what has been presented to us from the original design from Mr. Shibley. Reminding you as well, in our Parks Master Plan, Campanella Estates Park is a, um, community park. It's always been designed to be a community park. It actually says in the master plan that it's recommended that that's where the splash pad goes. It's obviously up to you if, if you want to totally redirect that. It is really unfortunate. I think probably what has caused the most difficulty in many of these people is they didn't know this was happening. So it's a good question. What should have the city done to make that known? It's obviously in the Parks Master Plan. So did that agree? It's very transparent. It's been there. Uh, it's not hidden. It's available. So anyway, we're gonna do our best this next Wednesday night to adjust the plan to the concerns that have been stated. And I think you should be encouraged, this process that we go through works. We put it out to the community. We heard the community response. You're the elected, uh, representatives of the community. So you've heard from them, and we've heard from them, so we'll be presenting something to you. So I don't know if you have any questions or comments you want me to take back to Parks and Rec at this time.
Yeah, go ahead, Jer.
All right, so just, just so I can wrap my brain around it, you know, considering, you know, the Wade Creek Park idea, Campanella Estates idea. Do you know the rough square footage of the splash pad that, that was planned to go into Campanella? Do you know the rough square footage of the splash pad that, that was planned to go into Campanella? It's just a rough idea. Yeah, I, I couldn't even tell you that, but, um, splash pad can be very large or very small. Um, and I, I think if it went into Wade Creek Park, it would probably have to be small. One of the things we did initially is we relocated the splash pad where it was originally designed to try to get it a little further away from the homes. Um, and I might just add, the one thing I think the Parks and Rec Committee is really committed to do, whether it's in Campanella Estates or another place, is to have a, a fully accessible playground for people in wheelchairs. And that's something that, again, some people have talked to us to have in Campanella Estates. So.
Um, so I've had a chance to sit with most of these people and listen to it. I've been in some of their homes. I've seen what they're talking about. I walked through the park. I looked at the plans that have been sent out. So I've got a chance to really verse myself well with it. And so, um, I've also got a chance to look at Wade Creek Park and kind of go over that as well. We're very capable of putting in a splash pad back where the horseshoes and the sand and things like that are, because they're not used that much. So that's something we can put in that area very easily and use the resources that are there. Um, to answer Jerry's question, the splash pad proposed, according to the map, was about the length of the parking lot in the back of the church there. And about maybe half as wide, kind of like a rectangle. So it's a pretty large size. Um, there's several things that were brought up that made excellent points tonight and I, that I've got a chance to look at. From the multiple parking lots to limited parking, to the way to the road and safety. Um, there are, uh, I think pickleball courts that are proposed to go there, but nighttime lighting, potential security cameras, all these things are in there. So these are things that we can look at, taking out that we don't need to have there. And we can put less impactful things, even if that means that we're, if someone likes the volleyball court, it isn't used that much. I've tried by it all the time. So the people that do like it, maybe we can put that in the, in the community park. So it's less impactful. And there are maybe occasional people that go use it. They're not going to be there every day with a bunch of kids. So we can do some swap outs and changes. And there's some additional items that are considered for that area, like a running trail that is already a well placed path around there. So those are extra things we wouldn't truly need. Consideration for the privacy of those, you know, their HOA doesn't allow uh, them to build a tall enough fence to give them adequate privacy. And so we'd want, if we're going to increase people into that park, what are we going to do about that privacy? Or those who bought it for that green space for review, they're going to lose that. So there's some considerations. Also, like where the play structure currently is. Those homes knew that play structure is there, that little one there. So why not replace that with a more ADA compliant play structure? Why move it across the way? Those are things that we can look at and consider. Try to take better for parking. And when you're taking that into the plans and the designs, that's what I would recommend taking back to consideration of all those pieces. We don't need to put a splash pad there. I mean, that's, we have a lot of other alternatives that might actually save the city some money. So.
Those are all valid concerns. And just remembering the process, we will be recommending something to you. Um, and you can do with it as you want. Um, so we'll.
Yeah, that's why them coming now gives us a chance to hear it. So we're not going to go back and forth five times. So now we have some things we can put in now. Helps you guys during that planning piece. Sure. So when you come back, you understand some of the concerns that we have now and that the, the community has expressed. So.
I, I, I appreciate, and I want to be mindful of our time, um, here as well too. We do have thirty minutes at the end. Thank Doug, I saw your name. If you want to speak up then, or, or even email us or send something to Brent as well too. Uh, I appreciate it. But thanks all for giving us your input this evening.
Thanks everybody for coming out. Appreciate it.
I have a quick question, um, Councilor Strobel. And we also have a member of the school board here, if you would like to speak on behalf of the schools. And regarding, do you want to do that now, or? Do, just a couple of minutes to do that before we move on? I know that, um, sports field has been brought up multiple times.
I'm Ben Wheeler. It's too close. Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm on the school board. I have been for seven, eight years. Uh, prior to when Campanella Estates was developed. And before that, I was on the planning commission. So, so have my hands in a few things. First thing is, I don't want to say it's a mistake, but it was, the Broadway extension that went through to Campanella Estates should have been a wider item. We all know the, there, there's issues with it. One way the school district is working on mitigating that now. It's not a school time issue. It's a this weekend issue with the baseball tournament. Well aware of that. Saw a lot of people driving too fast and a lot of kids jumping out of cars. Um, and there's an issue there. There's no doubt an issue. The school district right now is working on running a uh, roadway that would be open for those timeframes that runs from adjacent to the bus barn, the south entrance on the bus barn, straight towards the track on the high school. And it'll accommodate somewhere between a hundred fifteen, two hundred cars. At that point in time, those curbs will be striped accordingly and get the traffic off of there so that it's a two lane road and that there aren't cars parked on there. And I, I can't remember if it's both of the curves are going to be striped to where there's no parking, it's fire lane or whatever. Or if it's just the one, it would still allow it. But on a, on a typical night where there's just kids practicing there, most of people will park on one side. Typically, if it's just a, you know, one sport practice. But in a tournament where we had, I don't know. Call it twenty games this weekend. It was chaos. And I agree. Um, that has been out to bid once already and had no uh, bidders on it actually. And so now it's going out for a rebid. So hopefully, plans for that will be in place sooner than later. Um, there was one other thing on the school board front that I was trying to touch on. Oh, it was actually the Parks and Recs. Somebody mentioned the dollars for these parks fees. In my day job, I'm a builder, I pay permits. As some of you guys heard that I, when I was sitting up there earlier, part of that thirty-two thousand dollars is a Parks and Recs assessment. It goes to the city. It goes to a fund that is specifically for Parks and Rec. It can't be used for sewers. It can't be used for cops. It can't be used for anything else but Parks and Recs. And that's part of the state statute and city charter that dates back to God knows when. And so as much as it would be fun to go take those monies and put them towards extra police hours, it can't be done legally. And if it is, I, I wouldn't want to be a part of that because it's not a good thing. And just like the sewer fees, um, it, it's a hot button issue in the community right now. Those fees have to be done. Our sewer fees have to be put towards improvements, not maintenance. Or, or, I'm not saying that correctly, but it has to be done for capacity improvements. It can't just be done to, you know, fix a manhole lid on Wade Street when it's in Campanella Estates where the park, or where the sewer fees are assessed. So it could be said better. And there's somebody at the city that can explain it in more depth. But bottom line is, parks fees have to be used for parks, sewer fees have to be used for sewer, and they can't co-mingle. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, one thing I do want to address is, uh, the police, police has been, uh, has been brought up quite a bit. We do have a plan in place. Um, Clackamas County tells us it's going to take about another year. Um, for training and, you know, hiring and training another officer. But we do have another plan in place to get more coverage out here in Estacada. It's already been implemented. It's already been, you know, um, you know, already been started. The process has already been started. So, you know, rest assured, we're not just sitting out, sitting on our thumbs. We, we are working towards that, you know, safety goal. Cause, you know, we live here too. Um, safety is, is, is a big concern for all of us. So, but again, I appreciate all of you for coming out.
Yeah, this real quick. Can we direct the, the city to, I mean, the staff to have basically no parking signs temporarily, like a A-frame signs put on one side of the street and solve the problem now? Can they just, can you just no, put no parking on one half of that street out there just in the meantime and solve the issue for?
Well, there was no parking on one side of the street, but.
It's, it's intermittent pieces.
Is, it's just, people don't follow the rules anymore, apparently.
Signs up that say it's obviously we're paying attention.
I can, I can also let the, um, let our deputies know to keep an eye on them, especially on the weekends. Not that they can't be everywhere at once, but, um, to really try to make sure that there's safety in the parking situations that are going on.
Well, I mean, if I look at the curb, some of the curbs say, uh, have a stripe on it. Some, like it's intermittent on different sides.
Yeah.
If you look at, you'll see what I mean. But there's basically no parking the entire way from, from corner to the, to the angle parking. But five or six no parking signs up there. Then just have the deputies drive by and we'll solve that traffic problem, at least in the meantime until the school can get their piece taken care of. And then that, you know, just leave it out there during the baseball season.
And I, I can check on that with the public, our public orders director.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Um, so just, you know, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. And, um, I did receive the emails and, and read through them. And I understand your very, very valid concerns. Um, I'm sorry that there wasn't transparency or that, you know, you were either misled or mistold, or you felt that you were lied to when you were purchasing your homes. Uh, Scott, I like, it's gotta hurt. Um, so with that said, um, I'm keeping all of those things that you've told me tonight in mind. I'm looking forward to, um, Parks and Rec coming back to us. And, um, you know, again, this, the splash pad for sure is a legitimate. You know, something I would, I would not want to see in your community, um, either. I, I do think it does belong to it. Just if I'm just putting my own opinion out there, it would be better in Wade Creek. Um, but, um, I'm, I'm hoping we can come to a, you know, just like a peaceable consensus, a compromise or something between Parks and Rec and, and kind of what you guys have been going through. And just so you feel comfortable in your neighborhood and community and feel safe and all of those things. And I also wanted to piggyback off of, um, Counselor Ten Bush, what he had to say is, it, it's going, it coincides with the law enforcement thing. Um, we had a caller in, uh, Kim Abel. She did bring up the safety committee. So we are, we are starting another, you know, so this is another layer on top of safety. We are starting a safety committee. So once that kind of gets into play, then, you know, that's something that hopefully maybe one of you, since you do hold a, a very strong percentage of the community, that, you know, somebody from your community would like to represent, be, you know, sit on that. That way you have more, we have eyes in the community as to what's going on, traffic wise, kids, school, all those things. And, um, I wanted to let you guys know that if you didn't know that that's kind of in play. So, um, hopefully that gives you just a little bit of comfort. Um, so we are aware and trying to get ahead of the game, but things are developing so fast out here. We have to be like ten years down the road. So we're trying to really look way ahead, but with government, it, it just moves slow. So be patient. We do read your emails. We do hear everything you say. And we try to come to an agreement and compromise and everything that we decide. So appreciate you guys tonight.
Thank you. Uh, what, when is, are we going to be accepting applications for the safety committee, uh, Melanie?
That's a good question. Um, I don't have a specific date yet, but it was a goal for the summer. And so I would, I would anticipate those to come out in July. And then I can't remember how long it has to be posted before then we bring it back. So it would probably.
Twenty-one days.
It was, yeah, so my, um, my best estimate at this point without a specific date is that, that will, those will come out in beginning of, towards the beginning of July. You'll probably be seeing that at your first meeting in August to make appointments. If that's long enough, I hope that's, if that can be longer.
Thanks. Um, we are about to enter into the, the other portion of our meeting here. Um, a lot of you came for Campanella. You can feel free to head back if you want, unless you want to stick around and listen to budget talk. And things along those lines. But thanks, everyone. All right. Next, we've got the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? All right. Consent agenda passes. We've got department and committee reports now. Clackamas County Sheriff Office Report. We do not have anyone here.
We don't have anybody here. The report is in the packet for you to review. I remember there's that dashboard on the website also, which is interesting.
Did we put a link to the dashboard for the public through our website? If not, can we get one on there?
I do not believe we have done that. That would be a good idea.
Yeah, I think they'd, they'd like that to be able to see what's going on.
That's a great idea. I had a chance to play around with it.
Yeah, I touched on a little bit too. It's kind of cool. So.
It's very cool. Okay. Thank you.
And then, uh, committee, commission and liaison reports. Does anyone have anything I can?
Um, I, I, mine, mine's going to be real quick. Um, Arts Commission, they've got a, a, they've got a couple of events coming up. Uh, the big one is, uh, is going to be in July with the, um, the new mural that's going up over here. Um, and then there's going to be a, uh, in conjunction with the DEIC, it's like, uh, I can't remember exactly what, can't remember exactly what it is, but, uh, it's another event that's going on for the Arts Commission. Um, and then the DEIC has, uh, had a very productive meeting today. We had, we got our first visitor ever in the history of the DEIC. We got two commenters today, which was, you know, really cool. Um, some constructive feedback. And, uh, you know, just, uh, moving forward.
All right, great. Thank you.
A quick question. Um, I've been getting a lot of people asking, um, if the Arts Commission is ever going to commission a, a veteran to more, like a painting or something like that somewhere in the city, something that honors veterans or anything.
Um, every, every year, the Arts Commission has, uh, they purchase a, uh, a permanent art, art piece, um, the last couple of years. Um, you know, the, the piece back in the corner um, over there is one. They purchased a, they purchased a painting that has historical significance to Estacada that was done by Joe Carter that hasn't been put up on display yet. Um, but every year the, they, um, they purchase an art, a permanent art piece for the city of Estacada. And if you have suggestions like that, you're more than welcome to come in and suggest it or let me know and I can suggest it.
This is me doing that.
Yeah, I will next, the next meeting is the first Wednesday of July. So I will, uh, I'll definitely bring that up for, as an option for the next.
Awesome. And so they should just come anytime during the year and make, make requests if I redirect them to come in and ask as well.
As long, yeah, as long as they haven't already purchased it. They budget for it every year. Um, as long as they already haven't made the purchase, then, then yeah, I mean, if they have made the purchase, then, then, you know, it'll be towards the next, next year's purchase.
Okay, thanks.
So I had that opportunity to go to the school board meeting and that is pretty cool because a lot of people came out for that one. The school board met on the fifteenth. Um, quick update on their meeting day. So they up until this last, this month, they were meeting the second Thursday of every month. They have now switched that and it will be the second Wednesday of every month. So um, just putting that out there in case people want to attend school board meeting. Uh, just real quick, graduation was a huge success. I guess it was a standing room only and there were twelve hundred people. And so it was, it was packed out. It was, yeah, they kept going on and on about graduation. So I think everyone was kind of excited to get back and in person and, and celebrate these kids' accomplishments and things like that. So, um, I know. So, yes, so that's another thing. So new field, they were put, they were set back a little bit because we had, you know, Noah's Ark flood rain for forever, but they are, um, they are on schedule. I think they, I think I remember they said they unload or they loaded off eight hundred truckloads of dirt off that field. So I don't know if you can see back there now, but everything's looking like graded and ready to go. Um, I think they've just, with the dry weather, they're really, really trying to take advantage. And, and so far, things are, are set in place to, for it to be ready to go.
I'm more impressed to get eight hundred truckloads in here. I didn't see one dump truck.
Oh.
Yeah, I didn't see him coming through at all. I guess I missed that section, but dang.
So, uh, contract negotiations, they went and did a huge contract negotiations with everybody in the school district. And normally they do, you know, just the teachers one year and just the bus drivers the next and so on and so forth. They went and redid everybody's contracts. Um, they wanted to make sure that there were competitive wages to keep their talented teachers. They want to like, keep the talent in Estacada. Don't want to lose it to higher paying schools. Um, they also ha, up, increased wages, I mean, just increased wages across the board because their concern is again, with inflation and our economy. So with that said, um, Superintendent Carpenter did say that they are going to be immediately tightening up their budget just to be on the, to the air on the side of caution with just increases and, oh well, just everything. So, um, what else? That's about all I have. Um, so like I said, they had a good community turnout. Um, there were just some community members just speaking about concerns about some, some of the books that were in the classrooms. One, um, actually it was really cool. One of the callers called in, um, I think she had been at a DEIC meeting. Maybe it was our, maybe it was our community meeting. Anyway, she did mention the, um, the access, wheelchair access and the, the limitations over at the middle school. So. the access, wheelchair access and the, the limitations over at the middle school. So I was really, I was really glad that she caught, called in and, and brought that up. So Yes, thank you. So I'm like, where did I? So yeah, she did call in and that was great. Um, but yeah, I think that's about it. I have for the school district and so.
Thank you. Anything?
Nothing. I think mine's coming up here soon.
Okay. I, I met with the library board, but we were not able to get a quorum. So we will be meeting again in July. You'll see the library van around town. It's pretty cool to see. They were at farmer's market recently. So they're looking to get more and more and more involved in the community with that. So I think it's a great thing for them. I think that's all we got for this portion. City manager report.
Okay. Just a few things to share to keep us moving along here. First of all, the Fourth of July parade is a week from today. Um, yeah. So that it's at 10 o'clock in the morning and they are, it's, um, it's sponsored by the DEC. Um, and Connie, which she does an amazing job with the parade. She's on the DEC, but, um, she is, this is her, um, big event that she really does really well with and the DEC supporting that. And, um, they do need a few volunteers. If you would like to judge some floats or some animal entries. Um, I think or cars. I'm not sure what you're judge, but judging, um, I did that once. It was hard. Uh, but from nine to nine thirty is, that would be your volunteer time. They need two people for that. And then they need two people uh, between seven thirty and eight to do some taping off of the downtown area and the um, taping off of the high school area. Don't know exactly how you do that. Have not done that before, but you're early bird.
I've done both.
Have you?
Judging. I had my wife with me, so we worked as a team together very well. It got that taken care of. It's wonderful that it's, it's half hour and the taping off, as long as it's not windy. Connie's got things in, in place there.
Okay. Excellent. So anybody, just give us a shout.
I think I'm, my truck's in the parade.
No judging for you. All right. Or any of the community who wants to volunteer also feel free to give us a shout. Um, I wanted to announce that it'll be coming out in the paper. I think it's already online. Um, that there is an affordable housing project of 36 apartment units that is coming to Estacada. Um, I don't know a lot about it. There was a press release from the Oregon Housing and Community Services. Nope. Sorry. Oregon Housing Stability Council. Um, and there's, there was $73 million that was being awarded to wildfire affected communities and Estacada is receiving, um, a one complex, apartment complex and $9 million of that funding is going towards this complex. They will be, um, the people who will be living there are, they have to be at 60% of the area median income, which is, it's not a lot, but it also could incorporate, um, I think a lot of people, you know, where you know, average, um, wages around here potentially could really be beneficial. There is only 36 units, but it's a start. Looks like 12 of them are going to be two bedrooms and 24 of them will be three bedrooms. So they're good for families, um, as well. And that, that'll be going, we don't have a building permit yet for them. So I haven't been saying anything about it because I heard murmurings, but it's, it's hitting the news. So I thought I'd let you know.
Um, so this is so it's affordable housing, um, but not low income is like section eight or
It's not what you want to speak to that.
I, I was just going to say, we, we talked about it a little bit earlier. We still don't have a lot of information yet on this and the city is not getting the money.
No, it's not coming through the city at all.
So this is something that the state
Is doing.
So, so I, I would, I would expect we're going to have more information coming on here.
We dig into that because there's going to be a very large, you saw what happened with the previous stuff and I would like to make sure that the community is well aware and not just, especially not coming around the city because that did not go off really well last night.
Yeah. Well, go ahead and check that, check out the newspaper. I think it will be in it this weekend, hopefully with more information. It does say 60% of area median income, which is not, um, it's not low income housing necessarily.
My question is, why is the newspaper getting this information when the city's getting it?
That's
That's a problem.
That's a, that's a good question. Why? They had come and done a, um, a pre-application meeting. Um, which basically means it's public and it's public information, but as, uh, city employees, we don't feel that it's our, we try to be careful when there's a, somebody going to be, they don't have to do any land use applications is not going through uh, planning commission. They just need a building permit. They have the property. Um, it's in city limits. It's zoned correctly. And so there's, they're, they're going through the correct process. Um, and we, I was waiting till we get a building permit or something that's confirming that they're going forward. Um, and then the, the Elena and I were doing some, looking online a week and a half ago and saw it on there and we're like, wow, that's a lot of money that's being awarded for this project. And um, so we kind of, we knew it was, we knew it was coming, but it wasn't necessarily something we were at liberty to just say out and about. We probably could have, but.
Okay. I guess how long did you know it was coming in? My question.
That we found out about the nine million last week.
Last week?
Yeah.
Okay. If possible, when things like that come up because of the response the communities had before, can you try to get it out to the council right away? So that way we can try to head that off and rather than more look surprised.
We could, we could potentially do that. Um, I think with caution to the, um, person whose project it is.
Think the city council is privy to that knowledge, be my first thought. So.
Okay. Yeah, I will, um, take that into consideration too. I was hoping, I was trying to get it to you, um, as soon as possible. Um, but then I thought, gosh, I better let just, not to steal the paper's thunder, but just to let you guys know, um, you know, in public that this is, it looks like it's happening. Like I said, we don't have a building permit for it yet, but, um, according to, um, the minutes from the Oregon, um, Oregon Housing Stability Council, it looks like it's a, it's moving forward. So yes, Jerry.
Um, where, what, do we know the location where it's going to be built?
Up on the north end of town, um, across from, um, let's see, north, there's the library and then there's the RV storage, U-Haul, there's a little house and it's like the next lot is in, is inside city limits. Then it goes outside. It's like in, out, in, out all along there, but that it's that lot right there. So kind of across from where um, the school bus property touches, um, Wade Street there, and then where Campanella starts, kind of in that area from what I understand. Yeah. So
Else you got?
Having big news. Okay. Um, I'm working on the Comcast franchise and ordinance. That'll be coming to you next time. Um, Peter, our attorney, Peter, and I sat down with Tim from Comcast and kind of went over a couple of different options for, um, for franchise agreements. And so we're getting that put together. Um, the LOC, uh, League of Oregon Cities puts together priorities for their work that they do, um, at the state level on behalf of cities. And they do that in the even numbered years, I think they said. So you probably have seen this come out before. Um, when Sadie is back in the office, we'll work on getting together a kind of a survey or voting chart, um, so that everybody can send me their priorities and then we'll accumulate that, bring it to a council meeting because we get one vote amongst all of us on what the top five priorities will be. So we'll watch for that to come out and, um, we'll try to get that together. I think it's due in August. So we'll try to get it together as soon as possible. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, because they have been doing a great job at, um, taking like an initial concept drawing that was provided, listening to community feedback, using their own thought processes and, um, taking into consideration what, you know, the work that's already been done with the Parks Master Plan four years ago. And then they, in, I think 2019, made a determination of what amenities might go well in this park. So they've been working on it for a long time. And then when the picture comes out, that's when the community goes, oh, wow, they're doing something. And so it's great to, I'm learning this. It's great to have pictures early on in projects because then um, it helps the community to engage and, and really be able to take a look at something. And I think the Parks and Rec Commission has been really doing a good job at hearing the community, um, considering the priorities that were established and making, having these revisions done. They'll be making that final um, determination on Wednesday as far as what they want to put forth to you to, to recommend as a concept plan. And, uh, Stephen Chibley, who's doing that, oh, the concept plan reminds me that, um, the, not everything can be solved conceptually. So just because we say, yes, this looks like a good concept plan. And they might take the concept plan and say, and we recommend, we want to make sure that the, the playground is inclusive, the, um, the splash pad, you, you know, they can make whatever recommendation they want on that. But I just think they're doing a good job. They're, they really typically are pretty low key meetings and they have not been low key the past couple of months. And so they've been, um, they've been doing a great job and they're pulling all this information together and we'll get that to you to make a final decision. So.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Great. Thank you. We've got listening session summary next. I think you're up again.
Yes, that's just the summary of that listening session we had, um, in our first WhatsApp meeting. We had um, the tabling event and information gathering. And then we, um, sat down and listened to people share about, um, equity and inclusion in our, in our town and the local government. And so that's been posted on the website, but we wanted to make sure that the council saw that. It was, um, it was a good time. It was not, um, it didn't take very long to hear the people who wanted to share. Um, so it's, it's not an extensive set of notes, I'm sure. But just kind of a summary so that you know what was said. And um, thank you to councillor Strobel for being there. Who else was, were you there? Yeah, Jerry and, and Charity. Yeah. So thank you for attending. Uh, but we just wanted to make sure that was easy access for you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. I, I think having that, it was, it was appreciated that we had this. We look forward to the next one is August 15th.
August 15th, the next WhatsApp event. And we have got people coming out of the woodwork who want to be part of that. So it's pretty exciting. And I think people are and groups are, are getting excited about getting back together, letting the community know what's going on. And, um, yeah. August 15th.
All right. Thank you. Well, we're getting into council business at this point. First item up, resolution two, 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 zero, two, two, dash, zero, one, six, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, imposing the tax and categorizing the taxes for the 22, 23 city budget.
Yes, we just need a motion for that. That basically summarizes, it's the resolution to, to adopt a budget. And then the, um, recommendations that were made at the last council meeting, when that, when the budget gets printed up and posted online at the end of this week or first and next, they'll reflect those changes.
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right. It passes. And then the second one, resolution 2022 dash zero, one, seven, resolution adopting and appropriating funds for the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
I so move.
I so second.
Does anybody have questions about that or want me to? It's, it's pretty explanatory in this staff report, but if you want me to speak to it, I.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes for O. And now we're on to award contract bricks paving Northwest 2022 street improvements.
Yes, let me get to the right page. Okay. Um, Sadie has been on vacation and then, um, was not able to be at work today. So we can all think, be thankful for Sadie because she makes these packets go together so much more easily than we were able to do it. Um, she had it mostly together before she left for us. We just had to do a couple of things and it was challenging. Um, so anyway, thank you to Sadie for all the work she does. So this contract, um, there's a letter in there from our engineer, Cora McLeod. Um, it is to continue the, um, paving and sidewalks from the culvert over on Wade Street. Um, from the south side of the culvert down almost not quite to the corner. Um, so we'll finish, um, adding some sidewalks and curbs because there's, by the Wade Creek House. Um, and on next to the house by the park, um, and pave. And then also this includes the, um, the foothills drive, Edge Hill, Bunyard Place, Glen Court, that area up there, um, to repave that. Some of it is significantly older. Um, and then there's a newer section you, and if you drive up there, you can see as you get into the end of, of Edge Hill. Um, you can see where the new section starts, but, um, we'll be repaving that, putting in some ADA ramps throughout the neighborhoods. And, um, it came in, we just, we didn't really have a budget for it. This, like it, like it, we just said we, we can come up with $200,000 we'd like to spend and we'd like to do that whole area. So it was kind of a wish list. When it came in, it's, I think 290 was the cost. So Kurt's recommendation is to approve the contract um, as it is, and then we'll do a change order to reduce out part of that. If we don't want to pave that last portion, that would really only save us about $35,000. And then if we have to do it in six or eight or 10 years, we're going back into a community and messing it all up with construction again. Um, or, you know, but that's an option if we, if we need to start cutting costs, um, or just find additional funding to, to make that happen. Um, and we can figure that out down the road. We could do a change order to reduce it. Or we'll, and we might take that to the, um, infrastructure committee to see if there, because I, when I drove up there, I know it, it, um, councillor Ten Bush has a, um, probably a lot he could say about it. It's not bad. It, I think it was put in one in the, in the nineties.
Yeah, the, the mid nineties, ninety, ninety-four to ninety-seven, I think is when all those houses, the majority of those houses were in.
It's held up pretty well. The rest of it, I think is from the seventies. Um, and so that, that end of it's held up pretty well, but um, if we could redo it now, it would get that whole community done and it would be, that would be our idea. We just have to make sure we have the funding.
And the, does that include removing that, um, the center sections out of the, um, the two cul-de-sacs?
Yes, out of Glen Court and Bunyard Place. They have, um, if you have driven up there, they have a little like center island for, kind of for parking in the middle. But if you're pulling, like if you had a trailer, camp trailer or something, you're trying to pull around and get in your driveway, it'd be challenging. Um, but it does provide additional designated parking in the center of the cul-de-sac, but we'll be taking those out and just repaving.
The one on Glen, the one on Glen Court, a full-size truck has trouble getting around that. Not just a truck and trailer.
That's true. Yeah. So that, um, and, and we've talked to, I don't know if we've talked to all of the neighbors up there, but we've talked to a handful of them. They seem to be open to it. Um, potentially if they need additional parking, we could paint some lines in there, but then they, if nothing's parked there, they could pull around easier. But I think that they'll navigate that themselves. It's, um, yeah.
Councillor Hughes, you had a question?
No, no question. Um, just kind of wanted to, to, I know we had talked on the phone a little bit about it and, um, I'm just, I'm very much a one and done. I would hate to go back into a neighborhood years down the road. And especially I think if we went back into that neighborhood, five years down the road, it's going to cost even more. So as much as I would hate to go over budget, I think that it would behoove us to just move forward on this and just one done kind of thing.
You'll have no financial benefit from it. So I, I don't think.
Anyway, those are just my, my, my thoughts.
And it's that we would definitely not go, we'd make sure that the budget aligns so that we're legally following the budget. It's just, it's, it's just to term, to determine where we pull the additional funding from.
Councillor Licky?
Um, random question on this one. Do these paving companies offer warranty on their work? So in a year for now, we're potholed or anything else to come out and fix them?
There is, they, I think it is a year. I think it's a year. I have, I have to ask that and get it back.
Yeah, I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of curious because
There is a warranty.
I've seen some of these roads kind of go, they ask me if we're going to spend a bunch of extra money like that. Make sure it sticks. I'm just kind of curious to never
I will find out. I do believe it's a year and it has, they do like, um, Kurt and Dawn would do a walkthrough. Make sure that everything is up to par before we accept the work. Um, but I do believe there's a year warranty, but I will double check that.
So do you need a motion on this or general consensus on this?
We need a motion to approve the, um, to award the, a motion to award the contract.
And then what about the dollar amount? I mean, what's the consensus of the group from what councillor?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'd, I'd rather get disrupted one time than twice in five years.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
We can make it happen while.
I'm just trying to figure out the right amount here. Is it 292805?
No, it's for the full contract because it's for both, um, it's for both areas, the foothills area and Sixth Street. So it's $564,480. That was the low bid.
And, uh, how much above budget is that?
It was, um, it's for what the Wade Street portion, it was $2,800 above budget. And for the second one, um, we had, we, we were budgeting $200,000 for street overlays and it came in at 271,000. So set a little over $71,000 over. Which is well beyond, Kurt says it's well beyond the target. As a result, some of the identified streets will be removed from the scope to meet the available As a result, some of the identified streets will be removed from the scope to meet the available funds or additional funds could be allocated for this work.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the the amount so we can identify that in the uh, in the motion.
Oh, I don't think you need to. I, all we're doing is we're awarding the contract.
Contract.
And then staff will work with the engineer and with finance and.
We don't need to call it out since it's over budget. We don't need to call that out in the motion so that doesn't come up later.
Um, no, we just, I would just approve, make a motion to award the contract in in the amount of five hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Is it there? It's on page thirty-eight. Sorry, I know that was.
So moved.
Okay.
Do it here a second. All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So it passes four oh.
Okay, that was a motion to award the contract to Bricks Paving Northwest for twenty-twenty-two street improvements.
That is correct.
In the amount of five hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just so it's on the record, I still, for some reason, I still think that I should have recused myself.
We can just skip paving right in front of his house. We're good to go.
If if you recuse yourself.
Then you don't have a court.
Right.
Well, I I think it's identified as, like she said, you don't have a personal, like, financial benefit to it. And it's a, it's a community-based. So I think, you know, the same thing if you're voting for a nonprofit, I think it's all the same approach to it.
If you do have, um, so if you have a potential conflict where maybe that'll make the price of your house go up more and then you can sell your house, I mean, that could be a potential conflict. In that case, you you should indicate, hey, I live on this road. I'm all for the paving project, but.
And I think I've gone over that.
Yes, you have. So I, but you don't have to recuse yourself. You can just say what the conflict potentially would be. Okay.
All right, next we have award contract FKC Company, FKC Skid Mounted Screw Press.
Yes. And this is for um, we, at your last meeting, we discussed the, I'm going with the sole source provider. This is the sole source provider and they've um, freshened up their quote to us. They, when Kurt and Chris were working on just determining which um, company was going to be able to produce the screw press that we need and came up, they gave us a quote. And then they've, since between February and now, um, they have made some um, sizing changes, they said, I on, I'm not sure exactly what they changed in sizes. Um, but between, and still, and it's been months and we're in a uh, inflationary time and it was still only um, increased by about thirteen thousand. So Kurt felt very confident about this quote, that it's a good quote. And so we just would like to award this contract so we can get moving forward with that screw press.
So for this one, we were asking more information on this, right? I think we'd had this initially. Was this one being discussed in a prior?
Um, this one, yeah, this, oh, yeah, you were, I think you were, were you gone at the last meeting? I can't remember. So this was discussed in the, in that we wanted to um, not put it out for bid. Because when we put um, something out for bid, then we take the lowest bidder. And each company who could do this had a different way of um, constructing it. There was, this one is the only one, I think, without brushes. It's good maintenance. Yeah, they're generally local so that that we can get good service. So the council voted to go ahead and go with the sole source provider. This is them and now we just need to um, award this contract. Um, but we don't have to look at other um, bids because it's sole source.
Gotcha. All right, so a- any other discussion or questions on this? Doing your motion to award the contract to FKC Company, FKC Skid Mounted Screw Press.
Perfect.
I so move.
Do your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Passes four oh. That brings us to the OLCC license application for Timber Town Grub.
Yes. All right, this was pretty self-explanatory in the staff report as well. Um, Timber Town Grub is applied for a limited on-premise is liquor license. And the application comes to um, the city council because OLCC requires all liquor license requests to be considered by the governing body where the business is located. Um, they have basically a discussion as they've applied, OLCC has confirmed that their business has a pending liquor license and is not presently active, so there's no violations reported. And so the council either needs to recommend approval of the liquor license application or recommend denial of the liquor license license application if there's um, um, violations potentially that are not noted, uh, I guess would be the reason that you would be denying it.
All right, any, uh, I guess, do I hear a motion on this? So move. Do your second.
Second.
And then a- any discussion on this one, questions?
Trying to remember, did we have, what was the discussion that we, the consensus we had on this last?
They they had put in for it and then withdrew it.
Right.
And then the discussion.
For OLCC to talk more about it as to what.
And they chimed in and there was concern about food carts just in general and they they chimed in and said food carts can have it. There are some parameters around it and they need to follow those parameters.
I think one of the big things they told us to kind of copy there was us approving or recommending is more of a courtesy. So it's more on the all associated determine.
Got it.
And they, obviously, I think that they've um, they've met that when it gets to us, they've already kind of met that for the application, I believe, is what they also said. Oh, there's more, there's more of a courtesy notification they're going to have it. I think it's how they they all.
Great. Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was trying, I was trying to remember the liability and all that sort of thing. Okay.
City's not liable, it's on uh, and then the um, policing it is on the police force, not on.
Okay.
City, all right.
All right.
We have a first and a second. Can we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Passes four oh.
And we're still going after it.
Yeah, and then Campanella, you want to?
Yeah, so the main, there's two things, the main thing I want to bring up here. Um, one is we've already kind of talked about it and that's, I just wanted to give us more an official. If the, if we're here to give direction to relocate the um, splash park out of there and potentially into Wade Creek Park, I'd like this to give a more of a consensus direction to them if we can, or something along those lines. And then the second part I'd like to um, talk about is, it was brought up during the the talk was the um, was the park ranger, I'd like to have a more discussion about that because I think that's something that can solve a lot of their concerns as well. And it's something that we're getting bigger, so it might be worth considering.
And just, you know, go ahead.
So I I know that I I don't even think Paul was on the on the council at the time and it was uh, towards the beginning of, towards the beginning of my term. Um, and then also many, many, many discussions before. Um, so the 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 splash pad, um, there has been, there was so much uh, community input, community, community involvement and then backlash from the community when it did not go in at Wade Creek Park. And uh, so then the idea was we're going to be putting in this big eight acre park at, or we're not, but the, there's going to be a big eight acre park going in at Campanella. Um, that would be a, you know, a a great spot for a splash pad, not taking into consideration, you know, what the um, the developers told the people buying the houses because that wasn't an issue at the time. Um, but the uh, the outcry for that splash pad was so, I mean, we could have filled this room five times over. Um, you know, it was such a big, it was such a big deal moving up, you know, moving up through that. So um, you know, discussion as far as where the splash pad goes, that's probably going to be a, you know, a hot button issue. We're probably going to have to, you know, I don't know if we're going to be able to answer that question in one sitting, especially with just the four of us there. Um, Sean's got a lot more knowledge on that because Sean was here the whole time that that was um, being discussed. Melanie also, um, you know, and and like I said, it was a, it was an issue the, for the beginning of my term. Um, and then of course, you know, the, it was going in in Campanella at that point and it has not been an issue because that's, you know, so we just, you know, because of that outcry, back then, we we really do need to make sure that that is something that does go in in the city of Estacada because um, if not, we're, you know, we're not going to have a thousand residents. We're going to have, you know, four thousand residents, um, you know, coming in here, so.
Do you recall the reason why that it didn't happen at Wade Creek or?
Um, just plans and development and space. Melanie, you might be able to speak more to it.
The the um, both the consultant for the Parks Master Plan and for the um, when we did the design for Wade Creek Park three, um, they both were advising us that Wade Creek Park one and two were too full. They have the skate park that draws a lot of people. They have the picnic, they have the sand play area, the um, horseshoes, the volleyball, the playground. Um, and it just, it was too um, too constrained of an area was their recommendation. Um, but times change, you know, and so um, I'm not going to say it's, I I'm having a hard time going because when I like, we're on a plan, this is our mission, we're, this is where we're going. Don't, don't sidetrack because it could, you know, it could throw you off. This is a good plan and now somebody comes along and pushes you off. This plan that's been thought of for a couple of, a couple of years and then it's been even more time, you know, go by since that. And so I hesitate to um, waver on that, but I do, I hear what they're saying. And um, I do believe that they have a concern.
I do too.
And it's valid.
I want to point out, it's not just somebody pushing us off, it's twenty percent of our city pushing us off. And it's, it's what I'm saying is we can put that in there. There's a back area and we can take the less impactful, less used items and if need be, put them in that park there.
I think that's.
If we even need to. I mean, some of those items, if not used much, no reason to even put them in there. But I'm saying is there's an area for it. We've got the plumbing and stuff. It'll probably reduce the cost.
I don't know if we have the plumbing. I don't know where that came from, but I, but there is, there is water, there is water back there. Um, so I would write, rather than making a recommendation to Parks and Rec on what they should do, I would wait for Parks and Rec to have their meeting on Wednesday. They've been doing a great job with this. They can make a recommendation to you and then you can say, you know.
Like I said, I'm, I'm trying to avoid the back and forth there. We always.
Well, it won't go back and forth. It'll come to you guys and it'll stay here.
Yeah, and unless they come back with it going somewhere else, I think it could potentially get kicked back to them. So if we're giving them consensus.
I I, I mean, they they showed up to our meeting tonight.
Yeah.
So I think, I think the concerns are out there. The concerns, the concerns have been heard. I think it's great that so many folks came out and spoke to you. Had another thought about a park ranger?
Yeah, um, so the park ranger, we're getting enough parks. We're going to have an eight acre park back there. Wade Creek, um, they already expressed concerns. We have a higher transient um, increase during the summer than we have in previous years. So I think it's something we should be considering hiring on a park ranger position where it doesn't have to be the law enforcement level. It can be more of a service level where they're out there, they're, they're basically doing the, almost like a cleanup, servicing, almost like someone's security, they call law enforcement for issues.
The, our parks crew does go, which our crew, we have two people, but, and typically we have more in the summer, but we have not had um, temporary help come on this summer. Um, so, but we do have two guys, they go, they check the bathrooms and clean the bathrooms on a daily basis and empty those garbages. And then they go through all the rest of the garbages in all our parks twice a week and empty those. So they, um, I know there's, like, I hear, like, nobody's emptying the garbages and things and so we're, we, if we have to up it to three times a week, you know, we can do that. But um, for maybe during um, you know, how to, how to have more eyes on the park, more, more than them just going through and doing their work there, but actually have a um, somebody who's paying attention to what's going on.
And we've, we've recently expanded as well too, uh, from that standpoint. So I think, I I think you bring up a great idea, uh, Council Licky, um, for, from hiring anyone this time. I mean, the budget's in place already. There there'd be nothing, uh, at least I wouldn't think we'd be able to do anything now. I like your plan of of just kind of addressing some of the concerns with the staff that we have presently. And then when we get into setting council goals um, for the upcoming year.
Yeah, I mean, I get waiting for it. That makes sense, but we need to have it in our our radar to put someone there. And as the, I know that that part there probably won't be um, worked on probably until we get to that area. But we need to, getting people on there is great. If we get temporary help in the summer, that's good. But the, like, major concern is the transient population is, what I understand, has been an issue back there for different stories over the last week or so.
Many times.
Um, yeah, and so, but for example, if there's people that are, I think our parks close after dark. Um, and there's some other uh, ordinances we have regarding our parks. Are are parks people able to issue city-based fines or do we have to call law enforcement or code enforcement to do that? Because a park ranger would be able to issue those fines.
Right.
And then if there's a more serious issue, can can call on law enforcement.
We um, it would be law enforcement because after hours, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have like night, night security. I mean, I don't see unless you say, hey, hire night security.
Or closing the park down and, you know, that's someone that could close.
Yeah, so, but I have been talking with our um, with uh, Chief Mendoza about um, you know, the, having the deputies spend more time in the neighborhoods. We have code enforcement and she's out and about uh, on the days that she's here and she's very observant and proactive about things. And so um, I know that people do, they see things and they say they don't see things. They don't see that there's uh, police presence in their neighborhood. You didn't see eight hundred loads of dirt go out of the stadium either. So I know. So it's, it's hard because sometimes what you see and what the reality is, isn't, isn't the consistent. But I think we do need, you know, we do need to make sure that our people feel, that was one of the things um, in the Parks Master Plan. It was um, why don't you, people use parks more? And one of it was lack of amenities and another one was not feeling safe. And so to make sure that people are able to feel safe in our parks and that they're not like the only person out there with, you know, who knows who might be out there, you know, if they can feel safe. So that, I think the council goal idea is a good idea. We can delve more into it and determine what we were, we want to go with that.
Council Timbush.
So um, one thing that was that that was addressed, you know, in the emails and also tonight, um, is the HOA requiring that they they can only have, what is it, a four-foot chain link fence? Can we, can, can we have a discussion with that HOA and request that they, um, you know, at least in that area, request that they allow six-foot wood fences? I mean.
They should be able to change their bylaws.
I would think they're starting to take that over. Yeah, they're starting, and I think the gentleman who was here this evening mentioned that, how he's, you know, he's helping in that transition. I think once it gets to the community members, it will be better than when it was the whoever's managing.
Polish is currently running the HOA, but they're in transition to hand it off to the community members. Uh, filling up is going to be the first thing on their list is to adjust.
Yeah, because that, that just doesn't, that doesn't seem.
Yeah, and the fence along the backside of their homes that face the park is actually a city fence, something I learned recently. Didn't know that. Why would we want to, that, I don't know why we would want that fence um, to maintain and replace and whatever. Um, so that will be an issue that we can address though, if they change their bylaws and they want to change their fencing. Our thought was, um, in fact, I talked to Brent about this, about when the, if, when we start putting amenities in because they, I think these people think where the shovel's going in the ground next week and that just doesn't happen that fast. Um, but when we do put amenities in, um, if they don't take over, you know, and put different fencing in um, based on what their HOA allows, that we should at least put slats in those fences um, for them so that they would have more privacy if the HOA would let us do it.
Most, everybody I've talked to along that area did not like the slide idea.
If they just want to put up a wood fence.
Save that, that, yeah, save that money, America. No one thought that was a good idea.
Okay, yeah, I think.
I talked to you.
Every place else, they have wood fences all around the yards. And so um, I'm trying to see what the like unintended consequence would be of allowing them to do that. And I don't see anything really negative about it.
Then the, the issue of surveillance cameras, was that, is, is that?
It, it actually says in the uh, surveillance cameras on the the picture.
That's a scary word. We do have some security cameras like up at Wade Creek Park and we do have, and we have security cameras. Um, but we would, that's, I mean, to make sure they're not pointing at people.
Yeah, but don't point people's backyards.
Now I really don't want it parked.
Yeah.
They have to get in there, but.
We've got all that recorded as well too, with the surveillance cameras, yes, what they're going to be recording.
Yeah.
I I think, I think a commitment from the city to identify that that won't be pointing at anybody's area for that.
That has to be.
What, and maybe identifying what that will be, uh, used for and how we're looking at it would be a lot more helpful.
Yeah, usually like in the parking areas and the not pointing at people's homes. Um, but we don't have necessarily parks that are that close to people's homes, except for like Casadero, we have the playground up on overlook. Um, we don't have security cameras, just said that out loud, but we don't have security cameras in those locations. Um, hasn't necessarily been a problem to not have them, but.
All right.
Yeah, um, I will stop talking.
Yeah, light, light pollution was something they did bring up a lot. They were concerned about if there are portending. Yeah, light, light pollution was something they did bring up a lot. They were concerned about if there are ports and things that end up going in there. About lights at night shining people's windows. They already have streetlights that do a lot of that as it is. That's one concern that they brought up pretty heavy. Um, parking was another one. And so I think something we should definitely be considering and, and the parks, I think this is actually outside of Parks and Rec, this is. Council side is a street there is potentially making that once those parking lots go in, that whole street. Between the park is a no parking zone, so they're not parking on the street. And that they're, it's keeping a clear pathway, especially if when people are crossing the street, kids and stuff. You can see them from a distance because if there's cars there, you're not going to see them. So.
Those are great suggestions to come up.
Could we do, you know, like they have out in front of, uh, um. The big stores, you know, where they have that, that like, it's their crosswalk is, uh, you know, it's a, it's a thirty-foot section.
Mm-hmm.
You know, could we do something like that in that area to where, you know, people know, do not park here. We've got it striped off as a crosswalk from here to here. This is not part.
Yeah, we can, I think we can do a lot of those things when we actually get down to.
And, and what, at, at what point is it, I mean, no, you've got great ideas here, but from, from a council business standpoint, uh. At what point, it, it seems like we're getting ahead of ourselves with some of the suggestions. This might be some things to carry to the Parks and Rec condition. The parks as opposed to.
Parks and Rec can do like the park itself, but the street area I think is what falls under us. So I think we, the most of the recommendations are made to Parks and Rec. So I think they got them, like you said, they're here. Um, so, yeah, he's got thumbs up over there. So, but the street side is something we can definitely consider when the, the changes are made. At least have a plan for that.
We're already working on, like, the no parking signs apparently are insufficient. To help people know really not where they're not supposed to park. The fire marshal has let us know that, so we'll be working on it.
When I was in that neighborhood, those no parking signs were very sporadic and kind of confusing.
That's what she said too.
Yeah.
Well, we'll be, we'll be working on that.
Oh, and one last question. In the, the waterway in the back of Campanella, um, the question can, whose responsibility is that?
Waterway in the back?
Um, if you are driving in the company, it's, is that?
It's current, current, I think it, I don't know what.
One of the creeks there, you know.
There is water that comes like down from hillway.
It's like next to the church and stuff. No, that, that, like next to the church is like all fenced off. It's like a big.
Oh, the retention pond. Yeah, it's a storm drain, or a storm water retention pond. The city, the city is responsible for keeping that down.
Yeah, I was just noticing the maintenance on that might need to be considered a thing because it's like. Growing into people's properties and stuff and they're asking about it and I didn't have an answer, so I didn't want to let you know.
Yeah, it is, it is, um, city responsibility. So they do try to keep that, but if it's growing out of the fences, that's no good.
Yep, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't know. Sorry. Thank you. Um, this brings us to the final community input here. It'd be either you guys or anyone online.
No one raised their hand.
Okay, great. That brings us to mayor and council reports and comments. Final, final thoughts. We'll start with you, Council Licky.
Um, not, not much. I think I've spoken a lot of what it is. I appreciate everybody that watches this later for coming out, sitting in here. And, um, you know, the fact that we're willing to discuss this and even though it is ahead of the game. Think it's going to help a lot. The community will understand that we're listening, that we're considering it. And that their representatives are hearing them. I think it's absolutely critical. And if you guys get a chance, I really recommend for you guys to go knock on some of these doors there, have a conversation happen. Walk you through and show you their houses. It was really enlightening. So, um, but, uh, yeah, it's, getting, getting out of the community was really nice. So. Uh, thanks, everybody. Thanks, staff. I know I throw a lot of stuff at you guys every, uh, every week and stuff. It's. Obviously nothing personal. It's just, you know, trying to do what I was lucky to do, so. Appreciate it very much, everybody. That's it.
Um, yeah, I just, I love seeing this room full of people and, um, they're all able, like brave, brave souls to come up and speak in front of everybody. I really, I think it's awesome. Um, I appreciate more and more community involvement. Um, it's great to see. And, um, yeah, I just want to thank you guys tonight. Good meeting. I think a lot was accomplished and getting the balls rolling on a lot of these issues. And, um, looking forward to just a little bit cooler weather, not too much, a little bit. Yeah.
Agreed. That's what Timbush.
So first off, you guys are amazing. Thank you, staff. As always, you know, even, even when, even when somebody's down, you guys came through and gave us all the information we needed. Um, it was, it was really good packet and really good information tonight. Appreciate you all for that. Um, I didn't know what to expect. You know, I figured we were going to have a big turnout for the Campanella Estates Park. Uh, I didn't know what to expect, but I really appreciate that it was. Um, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of attacking. It was just information, getting out what their concerns are. It was really lighthearted at some points and, you know, might have been the most entertaining, uh, citizen comment section I've ever balled in, um, as a counselor, um. But I really appreciate that. And, uh, you know, I said it in the D E I C meeting, you know, the feedback that we get from. The community is, is so important because if they're not, you know, if the community's not telling us what the, what these concerns are, you know. A lot of times we won't know. So, you know, them coming to us, them sending us emails, you know, that's, that's. That's, uh, much needed and, you know, we need more. You know, it'd be, it'd be really good to get, you know, to get more, even more feedback from the, the community, but, uh. I just really appreciate everybody coming out. That was, uh, um, a lot of people that might have been the most amount of people or close to it since I've been on council that have been in this room. For a council meeting. So it was, uh, it was good stuff. I really appreciate all of you guys and the, the discussion tonight. It was really, uh. Really good discussion and, uh, thank you, Paul, for filling in. You did an admirable job.
Thank you. Um, a, a couple of things to close out. We received a resignation from Counselor Gates today. Um, I chatted with him for a while. He sees, has things come up and, and had to submit. So after eight years or he's in his eighth year on the council as well too. Um, I just want to thank him for the time he spent and invested in this community with this. He definitely guaranteed, we won't see the last of him. So we look forward to his participation. Um, in community events, in city events in the future. So we will be appointing, um, somebody to the council. We're going to get something out. I think you need to chat with Sadie and get the, get the workings, the timing out of that, but it's something we can just give the heads up that. Keep an eye out. We will be appointing somebody. I think we would hope to have them pointed before the end of summer. As well too. That would be the goal. So we've got that in place. It'd be good to get the word out on that. Um. And then we've got, uh, well, wish happy birthday to Counselor Dunsmere as well too. We wish the mayor a speedy recovery too. And then Fourth of July is coming up. Look forward to folks volunteering and we are thankful that we've got. Fireworks allowed in town. I know a lot of people are happy about that too. We got a much safer. Uh, season this year to look forward to, but we just wish everyone is safe. And, uh, happy Fourth of July as well. And thank you, staff, for getting us through this and for everyone's patience for me for. My first time doing this too. Thanks for all that came out tonight. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.